I have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, somewhere in the fine print, I missed what an M R C F Y is. And this keeps creeping up in interesting places. What is an M R C F Y? I asked AI.
It stands for most recently completed fiscal year. So it's their finance, it has to do with their financials. Or their attendance, but it's most recently completed fiscal year.
Thank you.
All right, and I've got five oh one, but we're looking for a few more people to join us, so we'll give it a few minutes.
Megan, we do have Emily Burr on the call as well. She's gonna stay off video, but she will be participating in the study session.
Great, hi Emily.
Hey guys.
Hey Erin.
I think we've got a quorum now.
Okay, I think, um, even if we get a few more people, I think we should go ahead and get started. Sound good? Okay, with, you ready Zoe?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start with roll call. Or do you, should you officially call the meeting to order?
Um, I'll call this study session, um, the first study session of the Adams County Cultural Council to order. Um, Zoe, would you call the roll?
Yes. When I call your name, please say here. Or present, Megan Hartline.
Here.
Joyce Downing.
Here.
Erica Hernandez. Emily Burr.
Here.
Lawrence Dunn. Jesse Martinez.
He's logging in now, sorry.
Oh, great, thank you. Jesse Martinez. James Towel.
Here.
Aaron Vega.
Here.
Yeah. Larry Dunn, can you, are you on audio yet? Okay, well, just note that he popped in. That concludes roll call.
Great, thank you. Um, I have a statement to share, and so does Dana. Dana, do you mind if I go first and then pass it to you? All right, sounds good. Um, so this is a note for the council confirming the process for our study session today. Um, so all council members should have their own flex portal up to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for and will be guided by the S C F D twenty twenty four rubrics. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, um, but I will call on any hands raised by the council. And council members, please keep your cameras on as much as you are able through technical difficulties throughout the discussion. There is not a scheduled break, but I will suggest one about halfway through the discussion list. And a note for the public. Study sessions are open to the public for observation only, so organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. Study sessions are recorded and the recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. And that's my statement, and I'll pass it to Dana for the S C F D statement.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Before we dive into business, I would like to thank the council members for their time and commitment to the S C F D, the county, and the arts, science, and cultural community. I would like to thank any organizations or members of the public who are joining us today for their time and dedication. It is important to remember that as an official council of the county conducting county and S E F D business, that these meetings are public and anything we say reflects on the council, the county, and S C F D. As we move into discussions, I ask that we contemplate the three core guidelines the S U D believes are imperative in conducting a welcoming, productive, and professional meeting. Be respectful of people, of organizations, of opinions, and of time. Be positive, assume best intentions of each of, uh, of each other and of grantees. Be present, own your experiences, participate, and engage. While this is a reminder to the council, it also states our values and expectations of this meeting for any visitors that are with us today. Thank you.
Thank you Dana. And with that, council, are we ready to dive into our discussion of our first organization? All right, so our first organization to discuss is A Child's Song. And A Child's Song has requested. Let's see, um, general operating support. Project one is musical experience for educational attainment. And project two is reach and teach inclusive community-based music education. Um, shall we start with generate, general operating support? All right, I'll open it up for discussion, um. And we can use the rubric to guide our discussion or anything else that we're noting with this.
I had one question, and this has to do with, um, the, and this is gonna help me further on for, for lots of groups, um. Under financial responsibility, there's the adequate reserves three to six months. Um, and that information, where do we find that specific information since it's so clearly stated on our rubric?
Um, are you referring to the, um, financial summary that's done by S U D staff?
Maybe, it's just that question comes up where three to six months, some groups mention how in their, in their narrative, um, they're, you know, their nest egg, or if they're working towards something. So this group, for example, did not mention any of that in their narrative, but I'm just trying to go off of the application here, so. Um, or is.
I can, I can answer that. So, um, the information about the three to six months is best practices that is outlined in the nonprofit association's, um, handbook. Um, they've since come out with the fifth edition, which is available online. Um, however, you have to be a member to see it. So that being the case, I can certainly share the, the handbook that I have with you offline, but the recommendations per, um, the handbook says that organizations, nonprofits should have three to six months of cash reserves. And that is built on a formula based on, um, their cash reserves in the bank. Their expenses for the last fiscal year divided by twelve, and that will give you how many months of cash reserves they have.
And Erin, I believe, I, I, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Erin, were you asking the question, how do I find that for each organization?
Correct, I'm looking at financial statements, and that has to do with their budgets and their breakdowns and all that, which is incredibly helpful. But in order to answer the question of do they, are they financially, uh, their fist, financial responsibility, organization has adequate reserves three to six months. Some groups talk about that, some groups don't, so I just wanted a little clarification. This group does not seem to state that, so I'm not sure how to, you know, if we're looking at each, each organization and each, um, each, uh, application, you know, on its own merits separately, so.
I guess I can answer your question.
It's, it's, it's in the financial, it should be in the financial summary done by, um, S U D staff that is in the portal under review documents at the very bottom. And if it's not, then contact us and we'll get it for you, but.
If I, if I may, um, I'm still trying to work through my, uh, uh, video, but in the meantime, I found the same problem. Um, I, wh- what I did was, you know, since, since the, uh, since that three to six months reserve was the first line in the rubric. I figured it was important, so when I couldn't find it, uh, I just, uh, continued through the rest of the, uh, requirements and ended up giving them an eight or a nine anyway. But, uh, um, I did wonder about that because I found, I found two, maybe three organizations that, um, that do mention the reserve in their, uh, uh, in their script about, you know, in their explanation of their, uh, of their finances, but, uh, those were rare, so. Yeah, uh, i- if that's important, then, uh, uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to get a hold of that and, uh, uh, so I could, so I feel I could complete scoring, uh, uh, the organizations on their financial responsibility.
So, uh, what I would suggest, um, is that council members, when you look at the organization, scroll all the way down to the very end of the organizational information, and in a green box at the end, there's S C F D's review. Um, so surrounded by a green color box, and then there is a PDF document that you can open up and either look at within the screen or download. And that S C F D review is something where there's analysis done by the S C F D staff that calls out exactly the kinds of things we're talking about here, including how much capital is in reserve.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at that. Thank you for that, Megan. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm looking at that, and I've also, I've looked at that, I've looked at the, at the, um, financial statements as put out by the organizations. Um, I'm not seeing, do they have three months to six months reserves? I see what they have, I see the amounts requested, I see, you know, other information. Now, I don't want to waste too much time on this, um, this just came up since it's the first one and it's, um, yeah.
Um, if they're not there, let me know at the very beginning, and I will calculate that and let you know, um, as the discussion is going on.
And I'll, I'll use A Child's Song as the example since we're in it. There's, um, in the paragraph of application notes, um, this is noted that they have two months of working capital. I think one thing that maybe, um, that I noticed about the financial summaries is that sometimes different organizations have different concerns noted, so it's not a, a beautiful form that will say like months, this many, but it's often buried as a line within the paragraph.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Erin, that was a great question.
That was a great question, and I really appreciate the S C F D staff for doing that analysis because that would be a lot of math to do for each organization. And I say it would be, I know someone did it, so I really appreciate it. Okay, so, uh, let's discuss the applications for A Child's Song. G O S, project one, and project two. Erin.
Megan, it was always you starting the conversation last year, so we're, we're stuck on our own. Um. Yeah, I love the, I love the, the removing barrier of transportation. That's something we talked about last year, the idea of access, what does accessibility mean, um, E D I A? And, uh, they've got a lovely phrase, they're removing the barrier of transportation. I thought that was, um, really nice to hear. Um, I saw some fairly large jumps in expected revenue, um. So, um, under, helping to under, helping me understand that a little bit more. Again, all we get is this application, so just helping us understand that a little bit more is really nice. Um. And then I saw, uh, it's interesting, they, that earmarked, uh, twelve K for marketing and P R of an in-school program in their broken down budgets. Um, that's one of those things where I go, oh, that's really curious, a really curious line item. Again, all I get is the application. So just encouraging folks to dive in and sort of explain, explain some of those costs is really nice, just because we don't get any other parameters, so, um. Yeah, just terms of G O S.
Awesome, thank you Erin. Any other comments on the G O S request?
It did mention they were gonna go to two additional sites with expansion on that general operating. Um, I believe it is mentioned maybe, and, uh, I think, uh, project two of what those additional sites would be. Um, it would have been nice just to maybe potentially include that as part of the project, uh, general operations of what the expanded two sites would be. Uh, just for, just for context.
Thank you Jesse. And since you mentioned project two, let's move our discussion into project one, musical experience for educational attainment, and project two, reach and teach inclusive community-based music education. I think, um, expanding sites is great, and I agree that we always appreciate hearing a detail about sites, even if it's tentative.
So I do have a comment, um, for both projects one and two, um. Megan, I am wondering, uh, they noted that, uh, basically there'll be approximately a thousand attendees uh, in both projects, but, uh, some of them are not in Adams County. And I am just, I'm just kind of curious if that's a thousand attendees, um, for all the schools, even the ones that are not in Adams, or, uh, if it needs to be broken out a little bit, so.
Thanks Joyce, I think that's a good question. All right, any other comments on general operating support or project one or project two for A Child's Song? Erin, yeah.
One more quick thing. I really appreciated their, their take on diversity, including ageism and folks with, um, what they term developmental disabilities. I think that it was just a really, they were able to hammer that, not hammer that home, that feels like a negative thing, but, um, it was just, it was real, again, we get one shot at these applications, we know these organizations based on these applications, and I thought that really, um, the writing of that spoke to what they find really important and where they work and helped me understand them as an organization, so. Um, thank you to whoever wrote that. Helped me understand where they were coming from, what they're trying to do.
Thanks Erin, that's a really good observation.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, I think, the, based on like last year's application, they did, um, they kind of, they have done the workaround, uh, disability and more inclusivity, um, with music programming, I think with its partners. Um, serving multiple partners in different kind of, uh, diverse or disenfranchised kind of, um, youth or communities, and so great to hear that project two is really zeroing in on, uh, the more, um, of the diverse and, uh, disabled, uh, community. And, um, good to kind of see that they're focusing a little bit more expansive. And I think with that too, I think to answer Erin's question about kind of, uh, marketing and putting costs related to kind of marketing within schools, um, thinking about ways that they can, uh, through kind of these types of programming, uh, advertise to families, um, that there is this new opportunity for, um, you know, serving their kids in this way, so I could see that playing out in that way.
Great comment, thank you Jesse. All right, let's move on to our next organization, which is Access Gallery. And Access Gallery has requested one project, um, for North Glenn exhibit. And I'll open it up for comments and observations.
Hey Megan.
Erin, oh, sorry, Emily, go for it, and then Erin's hand was up next.
Um, I just, I wanted to say I really appreciated the, the application from this organization, um, specifically really appreciated there, including, um, the incorporation of a portfolio review process and, and really utilizing those evaluation results to make sure that their programming is kept current and fresh and, and relatable, um, it's across the metro area, so, uh, really appreciated what they, what they brought to the table in their application.
Awesome, thank you, I agree, and I think with our rubric where we're looking at the approach, um, that an organization takes to program evaluation, it really helps to hear detailed information about actions taken as a result of evaluation. Um, Erin, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, the, because we get such a s- small little insight into their financials, the, the diversity of its income was really impressive to me. It just showed that they were, um, in fact, they have corporate foundational S C F D governmental individuals. Um, and they were all pretty, it was all pretty robust, which, which said to me they're, they're coming at this from lots of angles, which says to me that they have proper staffing, and they know what they're doing. So those little insights, as we're going through, so many of these applications are really handy, at least I found it very handy. Um, and again, I want to compliment the narrative. I feel like I know the organization, there was passion behind it. Um, and I know we're talking about a lot of data here, and you're trying to get a lot of folks or applicants trying to get a lot of information across. But the cat, the passion that the person who wrote this has for the organization came through, I thought, in a really thoughtful way, and the fact that they emphasized they're debt-free and all of these things, I mean, it, it just really painted a, a picture for us, because all we get is this, so, um, yeah, I just wanna wanna compliment that. I think the, uh, the passion was there, and that's really helpful for me as we're going through a hundred of these, or however many of these, um. If folks care about their, care about their organization, it's nice to, it's nice to hear it in a thoughtful way. Um, I also thought the, the purchasing of property, their property, I think it shows a real insight into gentrification forces. I think it's, you know, as we're, you know, it's Denver metro, so again, those little tidbits of information helped me sort of get a nice three-dimensional image of the organization.
Other comments from the council?
So Megan, I, I guess I could add a little bit, um. I, uh, really was excited to see that they saw an increase in new artists, especially those that had some disabilities, uh, in the program. It went from fifteen, I believe, from last month to four, or last year to forty-five. Uh, so that's very impressive as far as I'm concerned, you know, so. And they're also considering opening, uh, satellite sites, which, uh, kudos for them, you know, I think this is stating well for what they're doing.
Thank you, and Larry, did I see you're ready to chime in?
Uh, yeah, um, sorry, I was looking for the hand raise, um. I should have familiarized myself with this interface before I came on again. Um, this, uh, I had one question, uh, about, um, Access Gallery, they talked about their, um, they talked about their survey, their, uh, which is their, uh, uh, primary evaluation tool. I just wanted to know how many artists were included in the, uh, uh, in the survey, or, yeah, I think they were, they were, uh, um, surveying artists. Um, and, uh, and they, they gave some statistics, a hundred percent successfully sold individual, another word, you know. Uh, and I just wondered how many, how many artists were in there. I, I put that question in the, uh, oh, I thought I put that question in there. Um, in the comments, but, um, before I submit, I, I'll, I'll put that question in there again, just wondering.
Got it, thanks Larry, and keep in mind, if you're putting questions in the comments, I think the comments in the flex portal are only for you, they just stay with you, so. Um, they, they'll, they won't go anywhere and get an answer.
Got you.
Um, I agree with a lot of what was said, um, I think this is a really thoroughly designed project that really aligns with the mission and, um, thinking about impact on Adams County residents, I so appreciate that this is expanding into Adams County, and one thing I would be very interested and excited to see in future years is, um, artists in the program who are themselves Adams County residents. Um, if that is the case, that's something that would be great to highlight and just would add interest to me for impact. Um, and I'm really, uh, like Joyce, I'm excited to see how future years go with more satellite studios. Any other comments on Access Gallery? All right, my friends, let's move to the next organization, which is the Adams County Arts and Culture Commission. And Adams County Arts and Culture Commission is requesting support in multiple areas, um, general operating support, project one, which is Dust to Apples, and project two, Taza Gallery. And we could tackle all of those together, or we can start with general operating support.
So I can just jump in, especially with the first project. I thought it was really unique and interesting, um, uh, very creative. Just liked the way they, um, had a strategic plan and going into the eastern part of the Adams County and developing this whole project. I, I just thought that was very exciting and, and interesting. Really liked it, yeah.
Erin.
Yeah, I really enjoyed, uh, how they're focused on moving into more of the rural, rural communities. Um, Adams County has a, a very large rural community, and, um, if there are projects happening in there, that's a nice, that's a nice thing to, to highlight for me. I thought it was very creative and, and, um, again, strong, strong financial summaries and helping me understand where funds are coming from, what the staffing is doing, all those things. Um, because I don't get the opportunity to get to know every single arts organization, we don't get the, the opportunity to meet folks here in this platform, so this is our shot, so. It was well done.
Emily, I see your hand.
Thank you, um, loved the application, and I just wanted to compliment the, the organization for their project requests specifically, you know, very thoughtful, thorough, detailed, talking about, you know, where, where the events will be happening, and, uh, you know, it's just very organized and presented in a nice format, so it felt complete. I, I didn't feel like I needed to, you know, check some, another place in the application, or, uh, I had everything at my fingertips there, and it was, uh, much appreciated. Or, uh, I had everything at my fingertips there and it was much appreciated.
All right, other comments on this application?
I'll throw a little humor in there. Do I select a conflict of interest or not?
I think because we are not employed by this organization, um, we can't evaluate it.
Yeah, I know.
I was, I was looking forward to the Taza Gallery opening, but, uh, that's not gonna be until next year. So, uh, when I go back to work in the elections division, uh, I won't be able to see it this year. So that'll, that'll be kind of a shame.
Which Larry, I think that reflects the, the impact on county residents with having a show in a place where you're going for other civic activities.
True. And, 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 and many residents and staff at the county will see that report. I mean, we'll see that, uh, we'll see that show. People are, people are in there all the time.
I'll comment that, um, to echo some others, project one, the Dust to Apples project had really interesting opportunities for engagement. And impact to really. Draw people in to the artistic process across the county, which I thought was a really exciting project. Any other thoughts on this organization? All right, let's move to discuss the next organization, which is the Adams County Historical Society. Um, this organization is requesting general operating support and a project for historic and cultural events. And project two, which is a rec track payment system, which SCFD does have a comment about that project. Before I get into that, any general, um, comments or things to bring up for this organization? Aaron.
Yeah, I had a question. Uh, this is another, this is another discrepancy that I'm seeing over and over again. Um, in terms of contributed income, some groups, right? They list their contributed income. And then at the very next, uh, le- at the next, uh, form we see on the application. Their financial overview, it has earned revenue, contributed revenue. Sometimes they match, sometimes they don't. It's something, and I'm, I'm just sort of thinking it's probably a discrepancy in terms of either their budget years or something like that. But, um, it's just something that is catching my eye. So as people are filling these out, does anybody have, anybody in the council have any sort of insight? Into, they're listing all their contributors and you've got the total amounts. So for example, this group. We have a number that is about half of what then shows up on their financial overview. That was an extreme case. Some of them are within, you know, a few thousand dollars or something like that. But, um, is there any insight as to why those numbers wouldn't match?
I know you asked the council, but I might ask Dana for insight there.
Uh, there is no insight. It's grantsmanship. And it, and if you can't follow it, we certainly, uh, we, we try, but a lot of times we can't. And so we're just letting the council know that the numbers, um, they don't correlate. I did not do this, this review, but let me look at one of my colleagues' information. And, um. Hopefully I can glean something from that. And, uh, Aaron, I guess to add to that, sometimes. If they think that the categories that are listed there don't capture where they're getting some of the contributed income. It may not show up on the top table, but it may show up at the bottom. But in any case, it should match. Something should match their P and L. I mean, when, when it boils down to it, we always go back to the, the P and L to see what correlates on the application.
Great. And in some groups, uh, as an example, they, they mention that they, they make use of the. Is there anything else you want us to know about your financial section? Provide explanations for items that may arise. So just note, those things are catching my eye at least. Um, for the, for the organizations out there, um, and that just might help them if they need to explain. Some groups have said. We received a big in-kind donation, which we were forced to, which may be this group, but it just, I go, oh, okay. That makes sense. There was something that wasn't necessarily cash that came in. Um, there's another group a little bit later. Um, that specifically mentions that, um, where they were gifted some real estate. And I go, oh, great. So in the future, it's cat, it's catching my eye. If, um, folks want to make use of that, provide explanations, this group did not. For items that may raise questions of any financials, um, that's, that's your chance. Um, but otherwise their individual donor base I thought was impressive. Um, it sounds, I like the bilingual additions. The fact that they seem to be adding programs that's bilingual. I think that's, um, fantastic. Yeah.
Aaron, other comments on the GOS or project proposal?
So Megan, um, something that I look at every year, and I'll, I'll just bring it up one more time. We only fund two projects. And I, I kind of put this in creative writing more than anything else. Uh, but, um, this, the first project really has three unique funding asks. Um, you know, it'd be the Heritage Day, which is, I, I don't remember the, what dates that is. And then the next one would be Halloween and then the next one is Christmas. So for me, that's like three projects versus. And three unique ones. And I think they're all great. I mean, you know, I, I have no issues with the projects per se. It's more of having them embedded into, to one ask. So I'm, I, and I've mentioned this before, so this is nothing new, you know, so, but I, I really think that's something that we should look at. You know, so. But, um, I would like to know also, I, I really like the idea of the high school, um. Students getting an internship and I, I would like maybe a little more elaboration of that. I thought that was kind of interesting, but it just noted it and then it didn't go any further with it. So, but I thought that was very interesting.
Thank you. And Aaron, I see your hand.
Yeah, sorry, it took me a second to find the button. Um, my only comment to that, at least these were all in the same location. You know what I mean? Like, I, I fully understand, I'd fully understand what you're saying, Joyce. And I thought, well. It's, it's program, it's, it's historical programming in, in one location. So it did sort of feel like a, like how I would look at a concert series. That's the sort, the way I sort of view this, but I, but I fully understand where you're coming from. And there are, yeah.
And Aaron, to your point, I think that that could be drawn out with, um, some of the elements of program evaluation. That we're interested in the rubric, if it was kind of explained or drawn out. How the events support the organizational mission and efforts and maybe drew them together thematically and talked about. How these events all are alike because they support the mission in this way. I, I think that might make it a little more like a concert series. From a project point of view. Um, one thing I, oh, Jesse, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that does, um, both Aaron and Joyce's comments do kind of. Get me thinking just about GOS and the scoring of that, you know, um, you know, what dictates, you know, actually like. Is it capacity building? Is it really like thematically umbrella, uh, you know, for the organization? That programming in this way will help build its capacity. Is it driving more towards equity, diversity, inclusion? Kind of like, what is the bigger aim that kind of, or that, you know, that, uh, line that just goes through it all, um, in their programming? That would define why they would kind of seek general operating in that way, um, to all encompass those three, as Joyce was saying. So, um, just something worth to kind of maybe, uh, to think about is, uh, with the council. Um, how we begin to kind of just dissect that a little. To Joyce, I know we had that discussion many a time. But it just might be another one, especially with the new rubric with GOS, um, to give us some perspective.
Thanks.
Um, Megan, can I just add SCFD comment, which is for project two, as you all see. The comment that was made by SD staff that that is not an eligible project. It's for, um, basically capital, capital project, which we don't fund for projects. So that second project is ineligible for SCP funding.
And that is, uh, counsel the project for a payment system. So it's a capital expense, um, rather than a programmatic project. Um, I would suggest, and, and please steer me if you want this to go another way, Dana. I would suggest that we all score this on zero for project two. Is, is that how we should tackle it administratively? Okay.
Dana, I know with this is capital stuff, um. That still would not necessarily apply for general operations either, right?
They can do general operating. Well, I mean, technically, yes, up to ten thousand dollars. But they listed as a project, which is not acceptable. This is, projects are restricted grants for certain purposes. So it could have made it. Um, if they made the case for a GOS and only up to ten thousand dollars for capital. Well, it's more like exhibits. I don't know if that counts as like an exhibit or, um, an enhancement of some type of programming. So, no elevators, that sort of thing.
We covered both this, uh, Joyce conversation with the multiple projects and GOS with even just answering this special project too. So wow, all in one.
Right. Any other comments on this organization?
So I'm, I'm just wondering, in the past, when we've had grants that had a request like this. We had reached out to them and, and told them, even though, you know, why that we. Uh, scored them at all zeros. Uh, so I'm wondering if we still want to do that or, um. Just, just move on with the grant and just score it as is. And then when they question it, we can tell them. I, I don't know what council would like to do. I think.
That's, that's a great question. Was it typically the council reaching out or was it SCFD?
It was, I believe, I believe Zoe, uh. Uh, contacted them, uh, but it could have been Dana. I can't remember now, but.
Yeah, last year, actually the same organization requested something capital and SCFD. Dana, you were out at the time. It was Kendall representing SCFD, but she reached out, uh, and let them know that it was not an eligible project.
That's right. They requested a, a ramp, I believe.
That's right.
So Dana, is that something that you would be able to reach out to the historic organization about?
I will, I will reach out to the organization on behalf of the council. No problem.
Thank you. Well, I can reach out if you want it to be on behalf of the council, but if you want it to be on behalf of SCFD, you could reach out. But I'm happy to do it too.
I got it, Zoe. Don't worry about it.
Aaron, I see your hand.
Uh, just real quick, this is gonna come up for me a couple of times. Um, when we're evaluating, especially for GOS, um, organization missions, mission and objectives comes up. And the, the top, uh, criteria for that, that we're, that we're looking at as a council, organizations, mission and history are clearly and concisely articulated. So some of, you know, some of these organizations have very, um, verbose mission statements. Uh, cause the very top of the form that we see is the organization, you know, who's, who's put out the form and what the mission statement is. As somebody who has written quite a few mission statements, um, the, the clearer that, that is. Since it's how I then, at least for, I can only speak for myself, it's how I then interpret the entire rest of the document. Because I'm looking at everything based on whether the activities, the projects are mission driven. So if I'm having trouble understanding your mission and really what you do, um, in a really concise way. So I just want to encourage folks that may have very long mission statements or. Could be a little convoluted to some folks. Um, it might be a good opportunity to, to. Talk about some of that stuff with your board.
Got it. Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, I think we, we're all interpreting the, the projects based on the mission statement and the mission statement drives it. So that's a good observation. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next organization, which is Augustana Arts. Um, this organization is requesting a general operating support and two projects. Concert series and performance outreach and music encounters. And I'll open it up for comments on GOS or the two projects.
So I guess I could jump in Megan a little bit here. Um, uh. I believe the organization has a strong collaboration across every arena. They've been doing great work. Providing music for the, the youth for a long time. Uh, they, uh, work with underprivileged. And, uh, they, they have the schools with the Title One, have a lot of diverse artists that they work with. And, um, that's one thing that kind of struck me that, um, the artists really, um, address the fact that they. Could, uh, they would, uh, they could see themselves. It is part of the community. You know, the, the audience could see the artist as the same. So I really, I really enjoyed the grant. Um, I did have one question in project two and it's just a question. I don't know if it's. I noticed that they said that, um, they're gonna have three venues and they're only gonna have fifty attendees. And I don't know if that's fifty in each one or a total of fifty. But that's actually less than last year. And I, I guess it was kind of surprising and I was just kind of wondering about that.
Well said. Thank you, Joyce. Aaron, go for it.
Yeah, I read that as fifty in each only because there's three venues. And I go. Boy, you're, you're setting the bar low. Over fifty people out of three venues. Um, but I have to say the project itself. I really, I really enjoyed. And again, talking about getting a three dimensional view of this group, I'm not very familiar with this group. I really, I really enjoyed. And again, talking about getting a three dimensional view of this group, I'm not very familiar with this group. But I, the idea of going into transitional, the idea of transitional housing programs really spoke to me. I mean, I've never, the way it was phrased, it, it helped me understand why and the importance of that and, um, and why those programs are um, important. And then this group and, and others have done this as well, which I think is really nice is they acknowledge if there is i- if they're seeing an issue and they're making actions to correct it, they mention it. So for example, this group mentioned the language barrier. And they acknowledged that there is a traditional language barrier. And just by acknowledging that, um, acknowledging something like that, it says to me that the organization is seeing and hearing and listening. We talk about qualitative and quantitative data quite a lot. Um, in this application. Um, so just again, want to throw out those little Easter eggs are really great, at least for me. Cause it helps me go, oh, they, somebody said something to them at some point and they heard it and it's strong enough in their mind that they're mentioning it. And that shows a pretty healthy relationship with feedback. Um, so I thought that was pretty great. Their metrics tracking is something else that somebody who, who runs a venue, I really, really love it when I see robust metrics tracking. Um, cause that again says to me that they're, they're listening and they're seeing and they're watching, so.
Or project one, um, in my reading that there's like two projects or two different types of concerts in project one. I mean, just trying to think of that, like, is it thematically, are they, are there two different kind of scopes of the concert? Do you do, do we need to have one theme for project one or, you know, could you do? Yeah, just wanting to throw that out there. Or is it just the entire concert series, which encompasses two different types of concerts? I don't know. Any thoughts?
That is a good observation and I'm paging through, but I saw Erin unmute.
Yeah, I, again, I, I, I see concert series as a project, but that's my, does S C F D have a preference on how we should do that? Or is this based on the council members feelings?
Well, that's, that's a great question. I don't think that there's necessarily a really well-defined approach other than our definition of a project, which is defined in the, um, grant application materials. And, um, one of the things is that a project has a beginning and an end. Um, Dana, you, you're nodding along, so I bet you have some other things at the tip of your tongue.
You're good. I mean, that's exactly, you know, I, I guess it's kind of too left up to interpretation, but it, it's somewhat clear. It just says that, um, it should be a specific event or, um, a connected set of activities. So and it has a beginning and an end.
So I think in some ways it is up to interpretation. And I think, you know, rather than council member feelings, I would say like it could be up to perspective. We could lean on the rubric and think about, um, how well-defined it is about evaluation or impact or operations. Like there, there are different ways to interpret whether a series of events is a distinct related project. Um, Emily, I saw your hand for a moment.
I'm good. Thank you.
I don't know if I have a well-formed opinion on the serious question, but I did want to say that this organization um, spoke about developing the pay what you choose program. And I really appreciate that they're looking at removing barriers to access and looking at bringing an audience in as much as they can to their events. Which I really appreciate.
And just to piggyback on that, I think, um, the pay what you choose model I'm seeing cropping up more and more in these. And I think, um, that idea, if there's an organization that is um, does not want to lose their, um, what is, what is the phrase I'm looking for? Um, perception of value, right? Cause all art has value. But this idea of, well, we are work, our product is worth X number of dollars per ticket. And I feel like a pay what you choose model is actually really lovely because it still acknowledges that there needs to be income, right? For those organizations. So I think, and that there is value. And I just think it, yeah, again, I'm, I'm I'm really enjoying the pay what you, the idea of developing pay what you choose for some of these organizations for some of these projects, because it's it takes money to make art. I mean, S C F D doesn't give you every penny. So, um, yeah.
All right. Any other comments on this organization? All right, let's move on to our next organization, which is Aurora Symphony Orchestra. Uh, this organization is requesting two projects for Adams County Support. And the projects are bilingual young persons concerts and a pilot project of Carousel. Comments on project one or project two?
I guess I can jump in. Um, I'm excited for the organization. I mean, it's already noted that it's a sellout for both programs, you know, which is really exciting as far as I'm concerned. And, and it's also the unique project for number one, which is bilingual, you know, I, I think that is great. Uh, they are forecasting, uh, a bit of, uh, of a deficiency. And I, I was wondering about the clarification as it, from the S C F D notes, you know, about that. But I guess I, I guess I'll just jump into project two. Um, and for me, uh, and I, I honestly, I have read this many times because it really kind of, I was trying to see what I was seeing wrong, you know? But the project starts in August of this year. And it ends, I believe in September of this year. And even in the narrative, it's kind of elaborating in the same way. And we don't even fund, uh, or give them any money until after October. So I, I guess I'm really concerned about. I can't even say it's a typo. I, I was leaning towards a typo in the beginning, you know, where it shows, you know, beginning and start of the project uh, date, but in the narrative, it's, it literally is spelling out, you know, the dates also. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that. Um, because we can't reimburse, you know, with, if a, a project takes place, we cannot reimburse them for the project. So the way I'm reading it, you know, and I hate to say this, but it just doesn't look like it's qualified. Not that it's not a good project. It is, you know, but it's, it's just the way it's been presented to us. So help. Cause I have really struggled with this one.
Joyce, you are, um, correct in the part about reimbursement and the grant timeline falling outside of the dates that were outlined in the guidelines. Um, so from a S, S C F D perspective, if the, the dates are correct, then they fall outside the guidelines. Thus, they are not eligible for funding for that project.
And procedurally, if, if that is the case for the full project, should we take the approach of scoring the project for zero?
I guess we could think of it one of two ways. We can either score it a zero or we can just say ineligible. Based on, and that's what goes into the funding plan, ineligible.
Ineligible. Got it. I think, I think that's a helpful approach because I think it reflects the reality that it's more criteria-based than evaluation-based. Um, Larry, I see your hand.
Yeah, um, I was wondering, is this project number two, the, uh, the pilot project of Carousel? Is that what we're discussing now?
That is the case, yeah.
Okay, so, um, those, um, the dates, uh, August first to September 30th of this year are not are not eligible?
So we are scoring for the next year. Um, Dana, do you have the dates handy?
You're on mute, Dana.
Oh man, my cool factor just went down. Um, we say in the guidelines that is basically October of 2024 through December 31st, 2025, which is the 14 months. And so anything before that is considered the current year, um, which should have been funded last year for the current year.
I see. Okay. Is there any chance that they could cure that?
Unfortunately, no, because the grant is submitted and, um, we don't want to make precedence for organizations going back and re, revising their, their grants.
I see. Okay. Thanks.
So Megan, are we, are we trying for consistency here with how we scored the other one that was ineligible or or, oh, what, what are we doing here?
That's a good point. I'll answer that. So yeah, and, and the rest of council, I guess for the historical society, it should go in as ineligible as well.
Meaning that you still provide a score. We just, it is negated once we are working through the allegations?
There'd be no score. It would just be ineligible. So that's what would be on the funding plan, ineligible.
So we don't score at all?
Correct.
Yeah, no scoring.
Neither, neither organization.
Which was the other organization?
Um, Adams County Historic Society.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was project number two.
Yeah.
I'm just taking a note of
Yeah.
those organizations so we can keep track of it later. Okay. Any other comments on Aurora Symphony Orchestra?
Um, just one quick, quick question for Dana. Is there a way, uh, Dana, to put that in there already within? Or do we just, uh, just keep, be mindful of that when we're, uh, submitting our score? To do ineligible?
Um, when I do the funding plan, I send it Zoe. I'll just add ineligible as a reminder. So we won't use the score in, in the funding formula.
Gotcha. Okay.
Well, it's no trouble on, on my side. I, I made that note, but in flux. Right? Is that your question, Jesse?
Yeah, in flux, I was, I was thinking. Is there a way to put it ineligible or?
No, but we're putting zero on those. I'm sorry. Apologize.
No, you know what? Let me, let me find out from my flux expert and I'll let the council know when I get an answer for that. Is that okay? Okay.
We will hold together accountable for those two organizations as well.
Thank you so much.
Larry, I see your hand up.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Megan. I was just wondering if, uh, both projects for Aurora Symphony Orchestra are ineligible or just the one?
Um, the one that we have been discussing is project two. Um, the dates of project one are within the dates outlined, um, by S C F D.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we are working through some procedural questions here. Um, so let's move on to our next organization, um, which is Ballet Ariel. And Ballet Ariel is requesting this year. Um, two projects, project one is Cinderella and Tea Party and project two is The Lion, The Witch and The Wardrobe. And I'll open it up for comments on these projects. I'll start with a comment this time. Um, so I really appreciate that there was mention of outreach performances at, um, retirement communities and other venues. And one thing that I would love in future grant years is I would love specifics on those performances, like the numbers of the location. And those details would really help when I'm thinking about the, the part of the rubric that's impact on county residents. I think that would really paint a picture for me of the impact. Um, but I really appreciate adding those outreach performances on for people who are not able to make it to traditional venues. Emily?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to, um, thank the organization for sharing a link to a recent performance. Um, it, it's just, you know, it's again, all in one place. And it's nice to be able to have something to just easily grab onto and go and take a peek at at some of their, their work, um, in, within the community. So thank you for providing that.
Erin?
Yeah, I was looking at their, um, board staff and volunteers and uh, did other folks read this that they do not have any paid administrative staff?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just, just knowing how, how, uh, complicated making art is, especially the performing arts. When we're looking at, um, operations and strategy, which is number two on our rubric. Organizations have adequate staffing levels and well-defined roles, um, including board, staff and volunteers. It's just something that I, something that I look at. And again, I can only speak for myself and I don't know the organization. I only know them based on this piece of paper. So, um, if there are things like that, sometimes, yeah, for me, it would be nice to have a little, uh, maybe a, a couple of sentences explaining why they're structured that way or how that works, why that works. Cause that, those are big projects. Ballets are, ballets are big, big old things. Um, but it's just, it's sort of, I won't say raised a red flag in my mind, but it was something interesting to look at that, um, they don't have any paid administrative staff handling the business aspects of it. So.
Thanks, Erin. Good observation. And, and are you kind of getting a, saying that you're, um, when a organization is volunteer run, that's something that you want to hear a little bit about? Like operations and approach and strategy?
Yeah, especially when they went into such beautiful detail about the projects, about their art and what they're creating and how complicated things are. And they're moving away from the nutcracker because it was very expensive and costs are rising and, um, yes, I think it depends, you know, if it's, um, if it's a, you know, a tiny little project, it's a $5,000 grant. I go, that's not a big project. But for, for more substantial projects, which these aren't, these are crazy. I mean, the amounts of money they're asking for aren't, for Adams County aren't, aren't a ton. Um, but it's just something that I, that caught my eye. And so if there's ever, as people are writing these grants and they're looking at these things, if something, as they're revising them, as they're editing. And so if there's ever, as people are writing these grants and they're looking at these things, if something as they're revising them, as they're editing them, if there's something that's sort of, if they could put their themselves in in our shoes, somebody that doesn't know the organization very well, um, it just might be a nice practice to add. That's all.
So Erin, can I ask you a question? And this is just for clarifying purposes. So if the staff, if they did have paid staff, would that have changed your opinion of that particular section of the rubric?
I don't know. I I think it's project by project. Um, for for, you know, a tea party, you know, they're doing tea parties all over the place. Yeah, I could see how volunteer, all volunteers. But when I see that their total request from SCFD is over sixty thousand dollars and they don't have anybody to manage the books, or they do and they're just not listing them. Some groups, for example, mentioned part-time bookkeeper, things like that. Um. Yeah, I think just in terms of number two on our rubric, operations and strategy, uh organization has adequate staffing levels and well-defined roles. Um. That's that's all. I think, I mean, honestly, yeah, I probably would would view it a little differently. It's not that much of a difference, but from what I actually scored it, but I just wanted to bring it up as something since this is a feedback session technically for it's a chance for us to discuss and talk.
Darren, and I think like in the in the spirit of evaluating different size organizations and organizations with different resources, I think I would encourage us to remember that what we're interested in is is what their capacity is and what their sustainability is. And I so I think that there can be ways to fit that in with all volunteer organization. Um, and and so what I'm hearing you say is that you want to see more detail about it um and and hear that described in the grant application.
Correct. It's not that they can't do it. I don't know if they can do it. They've obviously been doing it for a long time and that's great. Um, it's just a matter of clarification. Exactly, yeah.
All right, my friends. Any other comments on this organization? Emily, I see your hand.
Yeah, just just quickly to piggyback on on Aaron's thoughts. It what occurred to me as I was listening to the discussion here was that, you know, we we are viewing so many organizations in in this lens, this granting application, this set of this rubric, this set of scoring criteria. And so the the more detail, the more descriptive uh position that is provided by the organization just helps us get a sense and grab on to something because um, you know, we're we are looking at each one individually and and taking our time and being thorough, but anything that you give us helps give us perspective and and we're able to then put put that into our lens and how we're 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 scoring um for projects or general operating. So um long story short, the more you can give us, the better.
All right, my friends. I am keeping a little bit of an eye on time, so I'm gonna do one last call for comments for Ballet Ariel. All right, and moving on to, and thank you all for your comments. I appreciate that discussion. Um. So moving on to the next organization, which is Bluff Lake Nature Center, which is requesting um one project, family education and outreach program. So I'll open it up for comments on that project.
I was uh I was very impressed with this group like I was last year. They have great programs and outreach and um. I liked everything that, you know, that they're about with the uh with the nature preserve and how they're making it even more uh accessible for uh for uh people with disabilities. Um, I I really dig this uh this project and I was happy to uh to see them again.
Aaron?
I love that they included survey information. Um, that that we get a chance to really experience what people are saying about them. Um, and the programming and all of that. I think that was awesome. Acknowledging opportunities for improvement. Again, I've said it before. I think that was really lovely. They've got a diverse set of contributors. I do have one quick question about project revenue versus project expenses. There is a discrepancy there. Should they match? It's not by much. It is not that big of a deal. You know, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars difference, but um what how should we? How should we do that?
There there is a discrepancy. They should match exactly. Um. So I believe that uh if they don't match, I believe that SCFD amends the request to match the expenses. Is that correct?
We only amend if they go over fifty percent of the of the expenses.
Got it.
Um, yeah, and they're below because the project is huge, but technically they should match um because it's it's a bu- it's a budget. So, yeah.
And it's less than a thousand dollars in terms of the larger ask. Yeah, I just wanted to ask that question.
A good question. Good eye.
You know, and typically we might mention to the organization or just mention that it's not a balanced budget. Uh, and we would like to see it balanced, but um, like you said, it's a small amount. But it should still be balanced.
I'll weigh in that I thought this was really thoughtful program design. Um, and I loved seeing that it was twenty-two percent Adams County attendance for the program. I thought that that was really evidence of a good draw and good impact on Adams County residents. Any other comments on this project? All right, let's move on to our next organization, which is Boulder Ballet. And this organization is requesting one project um for educational outreach. What are the questions and comments from the council?
I was just gonna mention that um for the amount requested to serve three schools, pretty impeccable, pretty incredible. Um, I think being able to serve um the number of schools and the number of estimated participants across all three programs is pretty great, very cost-effective. Um, and kudos for their um ability to deliver in that way for their students and community.
Karen, I see your hand.
Yeah, um, I thought the the work though that they described uh within the autism spectrum and physical challenges is really creative and interesting. Um. And I really appreciated them painting a nice picture there. It helped me understand where their where their hearts and minds are at and how how they view of that. The bilingual classes, again, I'm seeing that pop up more and more this year compared to last year. Um, I think it's a really awesome way to to build audience and that people are acknowledging that. That's awesome. Um, again, their contributed income is about a hundred grand shy of their financial overview. Um, so when numbers are that off, I just, I'm just curious. I'm just, I'm just curious. Um.
Good note. Good eye. I agree. I thought that this was um a really effective use of the budget to reach um quite a lot of individuals at the schools. Um, so Jesse, I totally agree with your comment. Other comments on this project? All right, let's move on to our next organization, the Boulder Ensemble Theater Company. And this organization is requesting one project, um the Mad Librarians Improv Comedy for kids and families on tour. Um, so I'll open it up for comments on this project.
So I guess I'll jump in, just one little bit here. Um, I do like the 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 project proposal. Um, and uh that they've in in a transitional mode right now and they've doubled their subscribers from two hundred and sixty to five hundred, which is awesome. You know, um, I just love it. Um. I do have a through SCFD, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have noticed it. Maybe I had would have, but their request is way over our cap. And I am just one, I mean, it to the, I mean, to the point where I am concerned that they may not be able to actually put on the performance because of the substantial reduction that we we would have to do. So I'm I'm just really worried, I think, about the organization. Um. Because their the request is nine, almost a hundred percent of the of the project. And I do understand, I mean, there's a lot of transition going on. You know, the owners or the co-founders have moved on and other, you know, other folks have taken on the responsibility, but um I don't want to see them get in a position that they wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be able to put on the project.
Good observation and heard about your concern. And I see that the the project budget is amended down to um, a little less than half of the request. Um, Emily, I saw your hand go up.
Um, I was gonna say that there's a note following the budget that says it's shown for the Adams County performances specifically and it counts for forty percent of the total project performances and budget. So they are, you know, they're they're performing this in other counties and and funding is secured in other places as well. So um probably a worthwhile look at the budgets in the other counties to, and unfortunately, some work with a calculator to figure out what we're really looking at here in terms of uh stability, but um I think the comment was definitely noted, Joyce. Um. But I think it also is worth it to, you know, take a peek at their, you know, the detail of contributors in their financial statements to just have a better sense of, you know, what are we looking at here? Um, with with the transition and and what's what's happening with the health of the organization.
Yep, and I totally agree. Uh, you know, and that's my concern. I want them to succeed, you know. And I I they can't use the money maybe from, and I don't recall the from Arapahoe County, let's say, to supplement money in Adams. So I I'm just concerned about it. That's all, because I do want them to succeed and and improve constantly.
Thank you, Joyce, and Emily, and Erin, I see your hand.
Yeah, I'm I'm reading this. It it feels like with that, this is forty percent. Do we take that into account? So they're asking for less than half of it looks like they're asking for less, but that's not the numbers they gave us. And again, we only see this piece of paper, really, and the application. And Dana, is how do we, if if this is truly less than fifty, if they're asking for less than fifty percent of the total project, do we take that into account? So whoever filled out that form was just thinking county to county and they weren't thinking, it looks like they weren't thinking for the total, but I don't want to put words in their mouth. How do you? Do you do a little due diligence, a little investigation, or do we just have to go off of what we're seeing?
Because because Adams County does not uh go back to organizations for clarification. You have to go based on what's on the grant. And so it's fifty percent of the sixty-four eighty is what they're eligible to request. And so that that's the reason why the SCFD financial summary um is fifty percent of that sixty-four eighty, which is the budget. So I guess to answer your question, it it's the requested amount, unless you're compelled to overfund them, they can ask for thirty-two um forty.
But if they had put, if they had put the SCFD prod, if they had put the project at, say, if this is forty percent, if we do the math, which I've got an arts degree. Um, if if we did that math and they had put that as the project, so this is just a word of caution maybe for for folks as they're, am I hearing that correctly? That we just have to?
I think what what we're talking about is that the budget that is in the grant needs to reflect the budget for the project and that we can only grant half of that project.
Right.
Um, Jesse and then Larry, I see your hands.
Dana, so if we were to proceed and they were able to get some funds, when they do submit their narrative for the kind of year, they would have had said that they did serve those three schools delivering that type of programming on a three thousand dollar budget if awarded.
Correct. And if they find that they need to do an amendment, depending on what um the funding will be, then they will have to probably in all likelihood, if they're made to be, if they're not able to do it based on the amount they get, they're gonna have to do a change um amendment amendment.
And they would be able to do by?
By December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So it could be like one school?
Perhaps.
Okay.
And so if they do that, it it really changes the way the project looks because we're going from three schools to one. So that's big enough where I would probably come to the council for approval to approve the amended um request. And if whatever your decision is, we can go back and say it's accepted or it's denied, in which case they would return the funds if they're not able to to complete it.
Great clarification, Jesse. Larry, I see your hand.
Um, I need to come along on this. Um, why is this project? Why can they not um submit the amount that they submitted?
I think if I can summarize the issue, it's that our um Adams County guidelines that we established last year lay out that projects can only be supported by Adams County at fifty percent of the total project budget. And this grant requested more than fifty percent of what they stated in the grant that the project budget is. Um, and our our question is that we believe that it may be that the project budget is actually larger and they're taking it down for just Adams County, but that is not clear to us in the grant, based on the budget information that's filled out.
I see.
So Larry, basically, we're following our own guidelines to say that we won't grant more than fifty percent of a project.
That was good, Megan. That was like, um, boy.
We spent so much time with those guidelines last year. All right, my friends, um, I actually zipped over, a little over half. We have completed ten organizations out of our eighteen for this evening, and it's six-thirty, so we've been doing this for an hour and a half. Do we want to take a quick four or five minute break or power through our next eight organizations?
I'm willing to power through.
Let's do it. Let's power through.
Let's power through. Okay. All right. For some reason, eighteen feels so much easier to tackle than twenty. Let's move on to our next organization, um, the Boulder Metalsmithing Association. And this organization is requesting scroll. One project, enhancing art through metalsmithing. Comments on this project?
So I was gonna wait. But with this particular project, I, I have always enjoyed the, uh, the project when they, you know, they ask for money. I mean, I, I think it's a unique uh, organization with the metalsmithing. I don't think there's any in the area, you know, of this kind. You know, so I'm always excited to see what they can do and not do, and it seems like they're expanding all the time. So I, I think that's wonderful. A little bit of the financials one more time, and maybe other people have noticed that also, that they incorporated in-kind in their numbers in the budget, and we cannot utilize those figures, you know, as far as monetary goes. And Dana, maybe you can elaborate a little bit about that, cause I'm not totally up to speed, but I noted that they did that.
When, for, for for budgets, anytime we're dealing with finances, we're always looking at cash operating. We don't include in-kind. We say it in the tutorial that in-kind needs to be backed out. You can't in-kind is non-cash, and so that doesn't, that's not part of, that should not be included in the budget.
So I'm So it looks like SCFD amended the project total?
I don't know how impactful that is, uh, you know, but it's something to bring forward.
I think, uh, in looking at this, cause it's been a while, um, the, the in-kind was for probably the, the rental, I'm thinking. Um, cause it says rental and facility expenses thirty-eight hundred, and the in-kind was thirty-eight hundred, so it may be for the facility. So when we look at the expenses, we're looking at everything except the rental and facility expenses as part of the cash budget.
Right. Got it. Thank you. To take the conversation in a little bit of a different direction, um, I really appreciate how this organization has a program design that has week after week impact with the learners and also really emphasizes a teach the teacher model. I think that that really helps the impact go deeper and have more sustainability. And Larry, I see your hand.
Oh yes, just a question about in-kind. I'm looking at their budget proposal. And in their project revenue, it says program fees. Is that to be read as in-kind? And, and how is that? How is that determined?
That's a really good question, Larry.
So there's different ways to look at in-kind. It just depends. If it's the facility, I, I, that's a good question. I have to think through this a minute.
I didn't catch what Larry said. I, I, I heard it, but it's, it wasn't computing. So what was that again, Larry?
I was looking at the, at their budget proposal for their project revenue. It says thirty-eight hundred dollars of program fees. How is that read as in-kind? And what is offered in-kind?
I would, I would guess that the program fees might be fees that the participants, like students pay. If there's a program fee where, oh, twenty dollars to participate in this after-school program, for example. So I don't, I think that as a program fee, I think that revenue is cash. And I think we're talking about an in-kind element of the project expenses, which is the rental and facility expenses. Pardon? Go on.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I think the in-kind in that element means that it's not a cash contribution, but that it's the estimated value of renting the facility that is being provided free of charge by the organization. Which is ineligible in our case for inclusion in this budget.
I see. Okay, that was that was hard for me to detect.
I mean, Larry, that is a good point. It's really not, it's really not clear, but we know that there's in-kind somewhere of thirty-eight hundred, and typically that's expenses. Like they're saving, they're getting in-kind for something. So it may, it may be the same, in, but any case, it has to be removed from the budget.
I can't recall where I read it, and I'm trying to find it in the grant, but they actually spelled out that that number was in-kind. They actually said it in the narrative, but I have to find it.
The budget's at the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Erin, you have your hand up.
Question, question for the other council members. So how would that reflect, would that reflect under number four in the rubric? Would that reflect under, how are other people, if you see something like that? Where are you, where are you, where's that being reflected for you in your rubric?
I think it could sit in a number of different places, depending on how you look at it. I think it could certainly be financial responsibility, as we're considering that requested funds are appropriate for the scale and impact, and financials are accurate and concise. Or I think it could also be potentially in operations and strategy. So when we're talking about like operational management and, and strategic management of resources. And I, I think that's kind of open to different situations and where each of us see that falling.
Question. So we would be basically deducting the three thousand eight hundred from the eleven thousand amount for budget, and then they would get fifty percent of that. So the ultimate would be like thirty-nine seventy-five they would receive if we were to approve. Uh, I was gonna say, uh, so this brings us back to even our last, uh, one of the other proposals here, uh, recently. We've talked about so many, uh, about, uh, them getting, uh, them having enough money to actually do the work. Speaking to ineligibility and us communicating that to the organizations, is that something we should consider? Is that based on kind of updates related to their budgeting or concerns about, um, you know, above the fifty percent cap? Should we, uh, Zoe or Dana reach out to them to let them know, or should we just let them kind of, it just be a part of the scoring that we do?
I think it's gonna need to just to be part of the scoring and something that we need to consider, and I don't have numbers right now, is the amount of money to allocate. There's no guarantee that organizations are gonna get a hundred percent. There's kind of a, a small expectation that they won't get a hundred percent of what their request is anyway, so I don't really know the best answer to that, but I, I, I mean, if we go back to this organization, we said that we weren't gonna go back to organizations for clarification.
Yeah, I would also, Dana, if I can follow up on your thought, if I'm an organization and I get someone reaching out and saying like, hey, your project budget was amended. Don't know the answer to that until we do our allocation. Erin, I see your hand.
Yeah, also just, just, you know, acting with a little grace. I don't know this organization, but we're working so far in advance. We're talking October of next, you know, this, they're gonna have to fundraise from other sources anyway. So I feel like the idea of something being ineligible because it's not getting its full funding amount, to Dana's point, I think that, that's not us assuming that they can then, if they can't do the project, they give the money back, right? So they're gonna find a way, cause you know, they have staff, they have folks, you know, doing this. I just feel like we add it to our scoring and, and move on and, and then they go find budget somewhere else. They find a car dealership. Somebody to give them the extra money.
Well, one way of looking at it is the thirty-eight hundred dollars in-kind, so that's just removed from the budget. So now we're looking at real dollars, and they're still getting fifty percent of those real dollars. So even though we're adjusting it, they're still getting fifty percent of a cash operating budget because the thirty-eight is in-kind.
That is a good reminder, Dana.
On a positive note, uh, the number of schools that they're serving based on the application and the amount that they're contributing and how they list in the, uh, grant proposal that it is no cost to students or teachers, I think is very uh, enlightening to hear. And, uh, I am happy that organizations are considering that for students and teachers.
Great comment. And Erin?
Yeah, I think you had mentioned this, Megan, the scholarships for teachers. I thought that would teach the teachers. Oh, I thought that was great. And because I never thought of, again, them painting a picture. I don't know anything about metalsmithing. And they went, we can't bring in people under eighteen because of all these things, so we can teach the teachers to do it. And I thought that, that really helped me see how good they are at, at promoting their art form, and that was really nice.
Yeah, I noticed that also. I thought that was a great comment and idea, you know, so.
Um, to the council, I would like if you all could do a little discussion around the, the school locations in the project. Again, without me like reading the entire grant, did anyone glean from it that they were serving schools outside of the outside of Adams County with SCD funding? Well, project funding, I should be more specific.
I don't, for me, I really thought that they were funding, you know, they were actually serving four hundred and ninety students from Adams County. That's what I picked up.
I agree. I think the project does list every location where they're doing any programs in this, um, but they were pretty specific about the high schools in Adams Twelve that they were serving in the description of the project.
Right.
Yeah, they struck me as, um, as being very particular about how they listed the, uh, the beneficiaries of the project, because uh, after they list all the venues, which include, uh, well, Legacy is still in the Adams Twelve School District, but the ones in Boulder and the one in Denver, they go back and list the Adams County ones and where they're going and who they're gonna benefit with the total. And I thought that was pretty pretty good of them to, uh, to, you know, let us know in Adams County, you know, what they're doing.
Just so you all are aware, Adams Twelve isn't necessarily all in Adams. Just want to be clear about that.
That is a good clarification. I always have to remember that because it's got Adams in the name. All right, in the interest, oh, Erin, go ahead.
Oh, and I was gonna say, how do we, yeah, I, I don't have children, so I don't know the school districts. I guess that's a, yeah, it's a
I do think that the, um, organizations are asked to list the county specifically of venues when they list out the projects. And I think that this application, even though they're noting that they're serving Adams Twelve, they list, um, for each high school, um, which county it is in. All right, my friends, we, we had a lot to kind of break out procedurally for this one, but we've been on this organization for a while. So in the interest of time, I would suggest let's move on to our next organization, um, the Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art. Um, this organization is requesting support for two projects, Contemporary Classroom and Adams County Schools and Exhibitions and Complementary Community Programming. So I'll open it up for comments on these two projects.
So Megan, I'll jump in, and I just am excited about seeing, uh, them reaching out to the eastern area. Uh, you know, they have a strong collaboration with Bennett, uh, School District as well as Adams County, and also the Arts Council in Thornton. But we always try to ask our organizations to reach out a little bit to the eastern area, and so I'm really excited about them bringing their projects out there. So I see that they have a strong collaboration and partnership with, uh, libraries and schools, uh, so, and also a senior living facility. So I, I'm really excited about the exhibits and what they're doing.
Emily?
Just wanted to comment on, uh, the fact that they spend and allocate significant resources to their program evaluation. Uh, it seems like it's really important to them and their programming and continued development of that programming is a result of that effort. And I, and I appreciated how thorough, um, that they, they choose to be in that realm.
Really good observation. Thank you, Emily. Erin?
I just wanna note that they, um, their budgets, I felt like were probably realistic. They have fairly high admin costs in their budgets. Um, people cost money. And again, as we're looking at these numbers, it's, you know, how, how do they value, do they value their teachers? Do they value their admin staff? Do they value, you know, are they being realistic about that? Because one of our financial responsibility is a large part of this rubric. Um, so, um, you know, I would just encourage folks to be realistic about the numbers, um, even if it feels like they're asking for for a bunch. I think it's always better to shy on on the side of safety and all of that when it comes to, comes to some of that. Um, and I know there's some people on the, on this committee that have served in arts administration offices, and people cost money in those hours. So I just wanna salute them for not shying away from that.
Well noted. Jesse?
Just gonna say, um, I just, I'm like to Joyce's point. Just gonna say, I just, I'm like to Joyce's point. I was just excited to see kind of the reach that they've been able to do. They've kind of, they really have a formula for expansion, land and expand, of how they are working through kind of entities and organizations to deliver programming. And I think the Contemporary Classroom was just like another kind of extension of their delivery of their broad expansion, so not only in schools, but now libraries and community as well. You know, I was just kind of looking at kind of the other kind of funding requests out of the SCFD and you know, they certainly have a model that is able to kind of get traction. So being able to work with libraries or you know, other kind of entities like that to really cement their work and expand. So just, I was just trying to see about like the number of staff, because I mean, I can't imagine delivering so much, so much programming, you know, with the limited staff. So that just kind of hurts my ears a little about like, oh, how many staff are gonna be able to kind of pull like seven county strategy around that? So that was just an observation for me, but pretty exciting. I mean, they have the budget for, for that. But certainly very exciting to see kind of their formula of how they're approaching the work. Even as an entity of Boulder, going out to the seven counties in that way. Certainly a strategy we should all consider one day in arts administration.
Great point, Jessie. Thank you. All right, any other comments on these two projects? All right, let's then move on to our next organization, which is Boulder Opera. And this organization is requesting support for one project, touring Sushi and the Flowers at Schools. So I'll open it up for comments about this project. Erin?
Why not? I'm taking, I'm taking Megan's role from last year. I really loved, again, the bilingual subject matter, this idea of they're going into these other places, they're trying to, and it is so mission driven. Again, their mission was so concise. I understood what they were about and the project fits so well into their mission, I felt when I was reading it. The, the mix of free and accessible ticket pricing with the opera in the park and other things, I thought that was really great to say, not all programs are free, but here's how we're making things accessible. Here's, we're balanced, we're a balanced organization. Some things cost more, some things don't. That helped me sort of understand that they were, they were viewing this in that way. I like that they're offering, they're branching out into the technical arts. I thought that was interesting. I'm gonna talk about accessibility. Not everybody wants to be an opera singer. And some, and there's a lot more that the art form offers, performing arts offers. So I thought that was very cool. Is there asked more than fifty percent of their budget? Okay.
I was, I was particularly impressed by their by their EDIA statements. A lot of, well, I won't say a lot. I noticed a few organizations didn't answer question number three thoroughly and, and, and and one not at all. But most of them have been very careful and concise in their answers. And, and, and of course, that question, the EDIA question has expanded from last year to this year to the board and the staff and this organization picked up on that very well. Not like, well, not like some.
And I'll say from my perspective, I really appreciated that, that their values that they expressed in their EDI statement really show up in this performance and that it found a lot of ways to be really inclusive and engaging and reflect a culture that is not always shown in every opera performance. And from a pedagogical standpoint, I loved that there was a really engaging, hands-on adjunct workshop to go with the performance. I think that this really takes into account an inclusion of different learning and engagement styles and offers a different way for people to engage with the content. So I loved the flower making workshop being a part of this. It was hard for me not to raise my hand and go first. So any other comments on this project? All right, then let's move on to our next organization, the Boulder Philharmonic Orchestra. And this organization is requesting two projects, Boulder Phil, a Bewitching Halloween Concert and Boulder Phil featuring Enyon Pelta Tiller. So I will ask for comments on these two projects. Erin?
Again, similar to the last group, I know we view all of these independently, but as we're talking about them, you can't help but notice similarities. Bilingual curriculum, I think it's just so cool to see more and more organizations hiring bilingual teachers and all that, just to reach into those communities. I think that really shows a desire to lean in those ways. And the other was, I noticed their diverse, the diversity of their composers, which I thought was really cool and something that I don't often think about. Yes, we want, we want diverse audiences, but also diverse art makers, which is interesting. You know, representation matters in a lot of different ways. So kudos to them for really highlighting that and it caught my eye and, and it was a really, really cool moment.
Great observation. Thank you. Jessie?
Just for Project One, the timeline, the start date is September first through October thirty first, twenty twenty four. So didn't know if that cause, I mean, what checks go out on the fourth of October, something like that. Just wanting to see no reimbursements before that timeframe. Right?
I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna take a stat, wait, project, which one was it, Jessie? Project one?
Project one, yeah.
I wanna take a stab at it and say, because it's a Halloween concert, they're probably doing the majority of their concerts in October with rehearsals starting in, in September. So it doesn't really follow the guideline, but that ten thirty one kind of goes into where the checks were cut. So it's kind of borderline. Because typically we cut checks mid-October. If that helps the council, I mean.
The narrative for the project specifies that the concert is on October twenty seven.
Right. But then again, there's activities that are leading up to the concert. It's not just the concert. It's like paying the artist to rehearse before the concert. So it's a tough one.
And there is a lot of programming around Halloween. I mean, that's a trick that's, that's sticky. Yeah, I can see how that's how, how has the council handled that before?
What a great question.
And we just had different conversations about the credibility, you know, and the dates and I don't, you know, we really didn't focus on it that strongly before because we didn't have the rubric is concise as it is now. So there's a lot of, things have changed, you know, from where, where we were and what we're doing now.
I, I will say, you know, and this is me just looking at the project expenses, it's very low admin costs added to this project, which says to me, they're not taking into account all of the, you know, the marketing and all the things that go at the beginning of a project. But again, it wasn't laid out in their narrative. This is me sort of just looking at the project expenses. You know, the orchestra, knowing orchestras, they, they rehearse right before the event. That's the expenses right before an event. But again, they didn't lay that out. I just happen to know how orchestras function. So it could be something in the future for groups that, but I'm seeing it in there, in the project expenses. And I'm sort of drawing my own conclusions, but a little clarity on that would have been nice.
But Dana, just for projects, the project timeline for this funding cycle would be August first, twenty twenty four?
Correct. As a matter of fact, I think in the guidelines, which I'm trying to find super quick, we say October through December. So it's, it's close, but again, I just wish organizations would really pay attention to those guidelines. Because it's clearly stated there. So it, I think at this point is kind of up to the discretion of the, of the, of the council. Considering that is overlapping, is, it's, it's truly overlapping that, that gap or that, that timeframe. So it says funds awarded in October twenty twenty four to be spent between October of twenty twenty four and December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Okay. I mean, it's still, you can still make it work. Yeah.
In all reality, it, it probably will work. I mean, they could literally spend their money, because I mean, they still have income that they're getting with ten thousand in donations and grants and sponsorships. And they're only asking for fifteen, which technically could be in October. So.
Okay, so I know we're not officially voting, but is the council in agreement that that is acceptable per our guidelines?
I'm fine with it.
Yep. Good to go.
Okay. Great. Any other comments on this project? Or either project, rather? All right, let's move on to our next organization, Boulder Symphony, which is requesting support for one project, Unstruck Sound. Comments or thoughts about this project?
I like the partnership with another SCFD organization in Kim Robert's dance. The, the, it's a, it's a very cool concert concept, I think, you know. I was taken by the description of the project and found myself just really engrossed in the application as a whole.
Emily, I love that you found a grant application engrossing. I love that adjective.
Yeah, well, that's cold medicine talking for you there, but yeah, I was, I was engrossed.
Erin?
I just had a question about, because I haven't gotten this far into into the applications yet. So this seems like it's with this collaboration with Kim Robards, is Kim Robards also asking for money for this project?
Have a look, have a look.
Thank you.
I think that's really good to note. I think one initial perspective that I would have might be that each organization would have their own expenses that they were representing in the project and that I I'm going a little off the cuff without digging into the guidelines, but I don't think there is a prohibition against both organizations requesting.
The reason I ask is like ticket admission sales or whatever, they're, they're saying they're gonna raise twenty thousand dollars in, in tickets. Split between the two organizations, they mentioned that. So if it's one or, do you see what I'm saying? If it's, if they're both giving us the same numbers as opposed to giving us half of their expenses in the project. I'm reading that, the way I read this is they're asking for the entire, that the entire budget is a certain amount and therefore they're asking for thirty thousand dollars of the total budget. So I just as opposed to, it's gonna cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right? You know what I mean?
I read it the same way, Erin.
So I, I, sorry, I'm sorry. I am looking at Kim Robards' grant and underneath the budget, they outline the expenses down to the penny for every aspect. So if you get a chance, just compare the two side by side. I don't wanna necessarily call out this grant on a public call, so I would just recommend that you go and look at those, those numbers.
Okay, well, and I think we also are going to get to Kim Robards in our third study session, I wanna say. And so we can definitely keep it in mind for our discussion on April eighteen and that way we'll both read all the grants instead of skimming through it on this call.
I will share that the total grant, the total amount of budgeted, the total amount of the budgeted cost is ninety one thousand, almost ninety two thousand. I will tell you that.
Got it. Okay. All right, good for the council to know as we're considering this. Other comments about the project? All right, then we will move on to the next organization, which is the Brighton Cultural Arts Commission. And this organization is requesting general operating support in two projects, the Youth Art Show and Passport to the Arts, as well as our first visual arts support of this year, Finding the Little Critters. So I would say let's tackle GOS projects and then visual art.
I do like how they explicitly state kind of what their aim is on their general operating application. About, you know, marketing and their strategy, I would, it would be nice to kind of see a little bit more of what that strategy would be or what that might entail, just as a overview. It's kind of general, but you know, is it, you know, what the community outreach looks like, is, you know, is there Spanish translation? You know, yeah, just kind of details related to their out, marketing strategy. You know, um, yeah, just kind of details related to their out marketing strategy.
Jesse, awesome. Um, Larry.
Uh, I'm just wondering, what is the significance of a uh? Of the one dollar request?
For the general operating support?
Yeah.
Um, so for Adams County, and this is different county by county, um for Adams County, organizations. Don't request a specific amount for operating support. They basically raise their hand, say that they meet our criteria for requesting G O S. And then we do a calculation based on their total annual budget. Um, and then also this year will layer in scoring. So they basically just say we'd love G O S. And then later we say this is how much we're giving you.
I see, thanks.
And I think the software just needs a number, so it's one dollar. And Erin, I see your hand.
Uh, I just want to call on project one. I love the culinary and music angle for the students, the idea of an art show. Um, talking about inclusivity and all that sort of stuff, the fact that you don't have to be a visual artist, you could be some, you could you could share some other kind of art. Um, I thought that was really neat, a really neat angle. Um, and then for the art projects. Or do we just want to talk about G O S? Sorry, do we want to?
Let's go for it.
Sorry about that, my apologies. Um. I love the idea of the project presentation stipend. Um, I think a lot of artists, when they're asked to create a presentation, that takes a lot of time and they're actually designing and. The fact that they are acknowledging the time of the artist who will be who have been selected to present. Um. That's the way I read it anyway. I've never heard of another group doing that, and I think it is wonderful, um. That they included that in the budget, if that's the way I'm reading it. Did did anybody else read it that way? That they're actually going to provide a small stipend for folks who have been chosen to present, even if they're not selected?
I think I missed that part of it, um. I saw that there were prizes, you know, awarded to different things. Now, we're talking about visual arts now. Yeah, the the different prizes, um. For those. Individuals that found. Whatever they were looking for, you know.
Yeah, under list selection criteria, who will make the final decision? They talk about three finalists will be awarded a five hundred dollars stipend to present their concepts to the committee. Which will make the final selection. Um, but again, acknowledging that. Artist's time is also valuable, um. The time they're taking, so I just I just want to applaud them for including that in the budget, because I think. Ask for what you need, and that is a. That's a big. Barrier in terms of EDIA, so.
So can I kind of uh? Add on to, you know, for the visual arts, um, I'm I'm just wondering, uh, because the entire project is fifty five thousand. But. They're requesting thirty six. Eight fifty for the prod for from us from SCFD. But really, they don't have any other. Funders other than a letter of uh. Uh, that they'll, you know, from their urban renewal, that they'll provide some. Stipends or or support their program in some other way, but they don't have any other funders or fundraising. And I'm just kind of. Curious about the commitment of the community, uh, you know, for this, because there's evident, there's only two. Two funders for this project. It's their urban renewal. And it's SCFD. And they in urban renewal, Brighton Urban Renewal is only up to. A certain amount of money and it it just kind of jumped out at me, you know, that uh there were no other fundings. At least not written down, you know, there was nothing in a narrative or anywhere where provided in any information about other funding sources.
Am I misremembering that we treat funding visual arts projects very differently than projects?
We do, we do, you know, but I was I was just kind of looking at that, you know, so.
It does say in the letter of uh commitments for the Brian uh Urban Renewal Authority that they. Um, will sup fully support the Brighton Cultural Arts Commission. Uh, grant application is prepared to provide a financial match up to eighteen thousand. One hundred and fifty dollars to complete. Brown sculpture.
I was just bringing it forward, it just kind of uh because there I was just.
Yeah, it's a huge.
Many other visual arts, if I, you know, and I can't, I'm not gonna. Bring any forward, but you see some other fundraising component, you know, to the project, so it's just. Just thinking about it.
They did mention businesses as well on there.
Pardon?
We chat, they they did mention that they would reach out to local businesses as well for. Yeah, or and also I think for like some of the scavenger hunts kind of things. Um, just thinking also, just like a context. Brighton, maybe a little rule, I don't know if you want to like, you know, the ability to kind of fundraise in that way for. These types of public arts uh projects might be limiting, I don't know, just kind of like for context. Um, not as much resource or collaboration around public part in that way. Possibly.
That's true.
Well, something to also consider, council, is that um Brighton Cultural Arts Commission is no longer with the city of Brighton, so. Um. Their funding collaborations, I don't, I think they're. Quite separate now, so that's also something to consider that they don't have the city. Um, to support their their budget.
And potentially that if the city were. Persuaded to partner with them, that it would be a contribution from another organization rather than from their own organization. Um, I'll just comment that I loved that the whole art project was modeled on a similar art project in a different city that they saw that had. Really strong engagement. I liked that it was this kind of um building on good ideas and. Um, modeling after similar projects.
I think it's a very unique idea. I really think it is, you know, I just had those little questions in my mind about it.
Those are good financial eagle eyes. Other comments about general operating support? Either of the projects or the visual arts project?
So I'm. I can't remember which project. And it's project, but I think they're over the cap. Uh, uh, which is not substantial, I don't think, but they are over. Over their request.
It was project two, Joyce.
Pardon?
It was project two.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Good catch, thank you.
Dana, uh, when you say over the cap, are you referring to the fifty percent rule?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Just to be sure, thank you.
All right, last call for comments on this organization. All right, moving on to Brighton Music Choir and Orchestra. Um, this organization is requesting general operating support and um requesting project one for a concert season. So comments on either G O S or the project? Erin.
I'll I'll just say it again, um. Clarity of mission statement really helps me as I'm as I'm going through. Just helping how if it's clear and concise and I sort of know it tells me that the organization knows what it is and 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 where it is, and that's. Number one on our rubric. So it's just a matter of. Who are you? What do you do? Do I get a clear picture of that as I'm going through the other stuff? So, um. Just as a a reminder to folks, similarly to please pay attention to the guidelines, says Dana. Um, are things are things clear and concise? Because that's gonna help. As we're going through these. Um. I'd I'd love to know more. I'd love to know more about the partnering groups, the bands, things like that that are going in. I think that's gonna help us. Um. In terms of uh. Um. Equity, diversity, inclusivity, accessibility, impact. What in the project one, what bands, groups are they partnering with? Um. Um, but otherwise, I love the focus on youth programming that the the organization has, and I love that they addressed their really large other category. Um, and a really large other number, and I went, whoa, 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 and then they they addressed it, and I went, yay. Good job, y'all, so, um. Uh, and for project two, I'd love a little clarity on what diverse range of artistic expression, what? I mean, it's a lovely phrase. I just, I'd love to a little bit of clarity, nuts and bolts on what that actually means. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Aaron. Other comments or impressions for this? Organization?
Um, just looking kind of observation, um. The budgeted amount isn't uh too. Uh, strenuous, but I did look at kind of the overall, it's about thirty four percent. Of their budget is coming from SCFD. Um, o- overall, and so I know there's mention of kind of diversification within. Uh, their revenue, um, so looking at that. Second comment, um, I know they are striving towards um more D E I practices. Um, I didn't really notice um or see. As clearly of how they're navigating that. Specifically, I think they're mindful of it. But uh, as far as like D E I statements or. Practices in a sense. Um, it would be great to kind of see. How they're approaching it, um. Uh, just besides uh being mindful of it.
Thank you, good observations. What other comments or observations for this organization? I'll just say that I noted, um, and and I think there were other comments about this, but I noticed a lot of strong collaboration, which I think is a really. Positive um sign that really helps spread impact and helps. With outreach, I think that that collaboration is wonderful to see. All right, final call for comments on this organization. Moving on to. Our last organization of the evening. Um, so Centro Cultural Mexicano. Is requesting support for two projects, Latin Beats, Sonidos de las Americas Open Rehearsals. And Living Artist and La Comunidad. So comments on these two projects?
So maybe I'll jump in, and especially I I always enjoy uh. Any type of a project that is reaching out to the eastern. Area again, and they definitely have. They're gonna have an art exhibit, uh, and they're gonna be working closely with the Anything Libraries, and so I'm really excited. That they uh have taken this opportunity to uh. To work in that area, so it's very good. And then also, in the first one. Um, I'm really excited about them taking the students over to Betcher Hall and having their little program. I was, I actually participated in one of those, you know, and went and listened to them and everything, and. The the students were excited, you know, the, you know, when they were playing with um. The orchestra, they were also excited, so it was just really, really a lot of fun, so I I really enjoyed this particular group.
I'll jump in, you know, really love the application, love what this organization is doing in and around the community and. Certainly want to highlight all of the partnerships that they have um been fostering and and growing over the years. Um. Uh, one, one question about project one, you know, I I think this, I I really appreciated the detailed project description here. Um, I guess I was curious how the Adams um County Schools. Were selected and. It. I, this leads me to my next question, which maybe is, I I don't, I'm not sure I'm gonna word it properly, but. Um, because I don't know why they particularly reached out to these two, um. But why not invite more? W- 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 could there be more outreach into Adams County specifically for this particular event?
Great comment, Emily, thank you. Um, I had a reflection for this organization with project two. I thought that the vision really aligned with the goals. And that there were strong partnerships in place. Um, and it was embedded in the community. I will note that operationally, it seemed a little fuzzy at this stage of development, um, just that it. Is early in development, it was kind of talking about the idea for a program, and there were not as many specifics about. Exact timeline, exact artists, exact venues, and I think that makes sense for where this project is in development, but. When we're thinking about impact and scoring on impact, having details helps strengthen those ratings.
I believe this, uh, there was a similar uh grant uh application like this. About two years ago. That had the same kind of um lens on the art exhibit. Um, and working with anything library. So we want to recall two years ago.
Yeah, and I think, uh, you know, the proposal sounds very confident about the partnership and and I. It it sounds like it's pretty. A well-established partnership. And I think, you know, Erin, you've made a comment a couple of times about um. Strong mission statements and uh how the activities reflect that, and I think this is a really good example of where the activities. Are really supporting a very strong and clear mission statement. Other comments on this organization? All right, my friends, with that, if we are concluding this organization, then we have reached the end of our first study session. So we are ready to wrap it up. Um, any final input or comments or anything to add from the council?
Sorry, quick question, did we? Did I completely space about Brighton Music Choir and Orchestra?
I'm pretty.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
We did talk about it.
Wow, wow, okay, great, awesome. That's great. It must not have clicked submit, yeah, it's a long day typically, you know, typically click submit if I feel comfortable submitting and that one I. Must want to go back, so my brain went, wait, that's still.
Erin, I think you even made some very insightful comments.
Yes.
Evidently, yeah, I'm absolutely brilliant.
Um, Larry, I see your hand.
Uh, just wondering about submission, uh, when are these? Uh, due to be submitted?
What a great question, so. What a great question. So you do not have to submit these today. We have a single deadline for all of our reviews for all of the organizations. And I'm gonna pull it up. It is after our last study session. Um, so I believe ratings are due. Um. In early May.
Ratings are May sixth. Let me go backwards.
Yes, May sixth is at eight AM. Thank you, Zoe.
So functionally, May five for me personally.
All right, I had closed everything out on my computer. I'm not gonna lie. I was like, I don't know the date of. But you do have several weeks, Larry.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks.
And, and your process for how you submit them is up to you. Um, I personally prefer to wait until after all of the study sessions in case. Something comes up that makes me rethink how I approached a rating, so. Um, but you could submit them all now. You just won't be able to get them back after you submit them.
I think I will hold off.
All right, great question. Any other questions or comments from the council?
None other than thank you very much. It was a great meeting. And thank you to the organizations.
Echoed, yes, thank you to um Zoe, thank you to Dana, and thank you to all of the organizations, and thanks to the council for a great discussion tonight.
Was.
All right, with that, the study session is adjourned. And I'll see you all next week.
All right.
Good night. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Right.
Have a good one.